Um, the time is eight, I just did, doesn't like me today. Doesn't, eight thirty-four and um, we will come back into our council retreat. Isn't that what I said? Oh, that wasn't on eight thirty-four. Um, any, um, any afterthoughts, any additional thoughts from all of the activity last night? And so the next red light you come up to and it turns green, you're gonna go, it works.
No, and in all sincerity, I actually, I mean, many of us have had a lot of retreats. I just wouldn't say like, I thought it went very well. I thought um, the conversations, the discussions, things of just, um, I, I hope that you were able to also get some background and information just to help, you know, um, bring you onboard as to what we do kind of during retreat and what we do during meetings. But I, I thought it was well done and very efficiently handled. So, thank you.
Thank you.
For audience's mic.
Never make that offer to this group, but thank you very much. It's, it's actually, um, it's very beneficial for everybody because we tend to, to hit a reset button after a retreat, remember where we've been, where we are and where we're going. And that's a really important thing for the group, um, you know, just reinforcing. Just keeping you in mind that, you know, what we're here for is for the best to Capel and sometimes it, you sort of lose track of that. So, yeah, anyway.
We're getting bogged down in the detail of what we're doing at that particular moment and forgetting about the, the big picture. Do you want us to move Dunkin' Donuts because it's too far away? No, we're, we're good on the east side. Thank you very much. Anything, um, we did cover a lot yesterday. Hopefully, just kind of a little primer on the budget. And then, of course, we really are excited today because we have the person that loves um, water. And she always makes it very exciting and um, everybody looks forward to the discussion about water. And so, welcome, Kim. We're so glad you're here.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I'm excited to present this to you. And I've been told I can share my screen. I do have a PowerPoint to go over with you this morning.
You can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, well, just to cover some background, during calendar year 2020, uh, the finance department did request Willdan Financial Services to perform a rate study for the Water and Sewer Fund. The purpose of the study was to determine if water and sewer, if a water and sewer rate increase, um, if those increases were necessary and to explore the idea of an increasing block rate structure. So in October of last year, Mr. Dan Jackson, Vice President of Willdan, informed council that no increase in water and sewer rates would be necessary for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Jackson also presented an increasing block rate structure concept that would generate the same revenue stream for the city as the current rate structure provides. Um, and so today, uh, this morning, I'd like to start the discussion concerning the idea of a new rate structure by answering the following questions. What is an increasing block rate structure? Why should the city consider an increasing block rate structure? What type of rate structure are our neighboring cities using? How would an increasing block rate structure impact Capel's residential customers? And then finally, when would the new rate structure be implemented? Um, first, an increasing block rate structure for residential customers establishes rates that increase with water usage. So specifically, the per unit charge for water increases as the amount of water used increases. The first block is charged at one rate and then the next block is charged at a higher rate and so on. So using the example on this slide, if a customer used 5,000 gallons, they would pay $15. If they used 10,000 gallons, they would pay $15 for the first 5,000 gallons and then $20 for the next 5,000 gallons for a total of $35 for 10,000 gallons. So why consider implementing an increasing block rate structure? Well, according to the Environmental Protection Agency, the purpose of an increasing block rate structure is to encourage water conservation. The idea is that encouraging conservation today will reduce the city's need to request Dallas Water Utilities, which you'll hear me refer to as DWU, to increase the daily water demand level in the future. The chart included on this slide is from the 2021 Region C Water Plan submitted to the Water, Texas Water Development Board. Capel is in Region C, which covers 16 North Central Texas counties, which include Dallas, Tarrant and Collin County, among others. The chart shows that Capel's current projected demand will exceed current supply for the region. Um, one of the water management studies is water con, uh, strategies is water conservation. And so moving to an increasing block rate structure would support water conservation, which is listed as a water management strategy. Um, if we can influence water usage throughout the rates, through the rate structure, we can impact future daily demand levels, which impact future cost. The city's uh, daily water demand was 17 million gallons per day until August of 2011, when it was increased to 18 million gallons per day. In August of 2015, it was increased to 18.5 million gallons. Um, I would like to note that several days in July and August of 2018, and again in August of 2019, demand from customers did push water needs to the 18.5 million gallon level and would have exceeded that level if city staff had not reached out to the community to limit water usage. If the city had not kept its usage at or under the 18.5 million gallons, a request for an increase in the daily demand would have been necessary. Um, an increase in the daily demand remains for five years, according to the city's contract with DWU. And we pay for that right to demand the, that amount of water, even if we do not take it. Currently, the annual cost for the right to demand the 18.5 million gallons per day is approximately 5.4 million or $291,422 per million gallons. So if the city needed to add 1 million gallons to the daily demand, the additional cost today would be $291,422. The higher wa, water usage by customers pushes that daily demand up. So implementing an increasing block rate structure distributes the demand cost charged by Dallas Water Utilities to customers with the greatest impact on the system. And then last, implementing a water rate structure that encourages conservation supports the region's sustainability efforts. So next, um, what type of rate structure do our neighboring cities use? Six out of seven neighboring cities utilize an increasing block rate structure. This slide shows the block levels along with the corresponding rates charged for each block. The increasing block rate structure prepared by Willdan provides a cost of $3.05 per thousand gallons for the first 15,000 gallons. This is a 10 cent, 10, this is 10 cents less than Capel's current rates of $3.15 per thousand gallons, no matter how many gallons are used. Compared to our neighboring cities, the $3.05 for up to 15,000 gallons is lower than all of them, um, shown on this slide. Whoops. Next, um, what would be the impact to our customers? This slide shows that 71.7% of our customers would actually see a slight decrease. This is because the current rate is $3.15 per thousand, as previously mentioned. And again, the first block is for up to 15,000 gallons of water usage and the rate is $3.05. So it's a 10 cents, um, per thousand gallons less in the rate. However, 28.3% of our customers would see an increase if they do not change their watering usage habits because they use more than 15,000 gallons. I would like to point out that customers do have a tool available to assist them in changing their usage habits. They can use the customer portal. It was a tool that was rolled out with the city when the city installed the Advanced Water Meter System. Um, and it helps customers manage their water usage. The customer portal provides customers the ability to view their usage and set up alerts. Utilizing the customer portal, um, by establishing water alerts provides customers with control over the water portion of their water bill. For example, customers can see how much water their irrigation system uses and manage that use to prevent moving into the next water usage block. In addition, staff has created educational sheets that provide information concerning how much uh, water is used by an irrigation system, how much water is used when showering versus taking a bath, when running a dishwasher versus washing hands and that, or washing dishes by hand. And that information can be emailed out to customers who request it. We send it out in the mail if they request it. It's also available on the Get to Know Your H2O website along with instructions to sign up with the customer portal. That's also available on the website as well as a link to the customer portal's website. So I encourage you to sign up for the customer portal if you have not, just a little plug. Um, next, what is the financial impact on res, residential customers? This slide shows the difference between the current rate structure and the increasing block rate structure prepared by Willdan. As you can see, again, someone using 15,000 gallons will see a nominal decrease. However, someone using 25,000 gallons will see about a $3 increase in their monthly bill. And someone using 50,000 gallons would see about a $24 increase. One thing to note is that the amounts shown are total for water and sewer portion of the utility bill. These amounts do not include refuge or stormwater. In addition, the amount shown under the effective April 2021 includes a reduction in the wastewater cap. Currently, residential customers pay $2.24 per thousand gallons of water used up to 14,000 gallons of water u, used. The increasing block rate structure does include reducing that cap to 13,000 gallons of water in this first year. So to summarize, um, both rate structures are projected to generate the same level of revenue. The increasing block rate structure is for residential customers only at this time. Um, this is an opportunity to encourage water conservation and impact future demand levels. And the city has provided customers with access to a customer portal, which is a tool they can manage, use to manage their water usage and control their bill. And then last, the rate structure supports the region's water sustainability efforts, since it does encourage water conservation. Um, next steps, if council's uh, direction is to move forward with this change, uh, we would bring back on February 9th, a, an ordinance changing the, the rate structure and the water rates to the proposed three-tiered rate structure with an effective date of April 1st, 2021. And then we would take um, February and March to publicize these changes. And then again, the change would be to the three-tiered rate structure for water and the thousand gallon reduction in the sewer cap. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, questions? Wes?
Kim, at the beginning of the presentation, you talked a little bit about um, how we fit into the uh, regional water plan. And you made a mention that we're showing that we're gonna be exceeding the, the demand's gonna exceed supply. What, what is their uh, estimate on when that could occur?
So it looks like um, the, the daily demand um, on here is the need, I mean, they said 2030. Um, the demand versus supply, um, total current available. So in 2020, we were, were projected last year to take 11 and this is in, um, this is in million gallons? Hundred thousand gallons? I'm sorry. So they were projecting in 2020, but you know, it all depends on, on rain. It depends on the weather or how much water we actually take. And so these, i- it's hard to determine. Um, and I think we've also been trying to do some conservation on, on our own. Um, but you know, as a city, changing um, the type of landscape and how we're watering and encouraging businesses to change the way that they water also. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Mays?
Yeah, I think so. Uh, I got really involved back when we were having the drought in, gosh, was it 2012, 2013? I don't remember. I know it was right before the flood of 2015, so um, they were, the North Texas uh, region was talking about, you know, other, other methods. They were actually getting pretty, pretty severe back then. So of course, since then, we've had a lot of rain. Another, another question for you, uh, now that we're past the, the lawsuit with Dallas Water Utilities and everyone seems to be playing nicely, um, is your, your block rate structure is kind of, is based on a, a plan going forward where there's really no basic changes coming from Dallas Water Utility?
Well, Dallas Water Utilities is still projecting 3% to 4% increases, um, is what we're seeing in their rates. Uh, and then TRA, um, they're, they're projecting, um, I believe, uh, up to 11%, just depending on how they structure their debt. They have a lot of infrastructure that they need to maintain. And so their rates really are dependent on the debt that they issue.
Okay. I guess I was just worried about those, those are known, you know, those are known increases that we can kind of plan on. So it was that, you know, the, the, the threat of the outcome of the uh, legal action that was troubling several years ago. So it looks like we're past that. By the way, your enthusiasm for this topic is, is infectious and thank you for picking us off this morning because it was a good way to start.
Thank you.
Uh, Gary?
Kim, help me better understand the reason for using block rate structure on residential and not commercial?
So, commercial, um, residential has more discretionary um, water usage than commercial. So take, for example, a restaurant. If they're washing dishes and their business increases, they're gonna use more water because of business. And they, they wouldn't, we wouldn't want them to not wash the dishes like, like they are. Whereas in a home, you can, um, deter, you know, how long you take your showers. Um, how do you put in a full load of laundry or, or a partial load of laundry? So there's, there's an easier way for residents to control their usage. Um, I think Mr. Leon, I mean, may talk about, but there's also um, an idea that, that I'm exploring of perhaps, um, for commercial, since many of them have an irrigation meter to implementing, um, the same block rate, rate structure for irrigation meters.
Yeah, see, I, I would push back a little bit. I mean, there are things in your house that you can't not do, I would hope. Showering and, and toilet and that sort of thing. Uh, that's just part of them doing business is washing the dishes, but they do have, particularly in irrigation, they have discretion. And I would hope we would want the same incentives for them to conserve as the residents have.
Bijou?
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
We are proud of you taking the lead in installing all the smart water meter in our city.
That was, that was a big group effort.
I, I think we all are very proud of you.
Thank you.
My question for you is, out of the 13,000 households, how many signed up for the portal?
So far, we have about uh, 2,400 and that represents about 17.5% of all of our customers have signed up for the portal. Um, I, I do want to maybe um, put in a little plug right now. Um, we are working with New Tech High School. We actually started the project last year and then COVID um, kind of put the, the school district in a different direction as far as moving to teaching online. So we had to halt the project, but we are, um, we have been in contact and we just met with them last week. But they are looking um, at a project that the high school students can do and working with the elementary school students to help educate um, our community on conservation, the water meters, the customer portal and how, um, how the usage and things they do at their home, what they can, what they, changes that they can make, like turning, turning off the water when they're brushing their teeth, the impact that that will have. And so we're pretty excited about that.
That's great for a project-based learning, New Tech.
Yeah.
On this project.
Yeah. Mom, you've been in there too long. Um, I am really excited about that project.
Yeah.
Really excited. Um, that's, that's how recycling really got a, its start here. And I had those crazy kids coming home and yelling at me because we weren't recycling, so, um, that's exciting.
Mary, you made that comment a couple of years ago and that's really what got us thinking about going to the schools to see how they could help us really um, get this out into the community. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Now the people that are in those schools that aren't in Capel are gonna be a little confused, but that's okay.
Well, right, and, and they are, um, so New Tech doesn't want to take it to all of the elementary schools that, um, because that would be a really big project. So this year, they're looking at which schools they want to work with as far as the elementary. And so they will be schools that are, are in Capel and would have access. And then we're looking at what data can we provide kids who live in the apartments?
Very good. Okay, sorry, that was a rabbit trail.
Yeah, what percentage of the commercial um, um, units signed up for the portal?
I cannot tell you that. Um, the, the information, when I, when I go out and look at who has signed up, it just gives me a total.
Okay.
Um, of how many. Um, we really, uh, you know, we really targeted our residents and we, we do push our commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Um, John?
Thank you. Hey, Kim. With this, uh, morning, with this new blocks structure, is there anything in terms of uh, providing additional, I guess, discount or incentive for the senior citizens?
So the seniors continue to receive a um, 10% discount off of their, off of their, um, off of, off of the rate. So they would continue to see a 10% discount off of the, each of the rates in the blocks.
Okay. And, and I'm guessing with the, I, I understand that we're trying to go in and uh, encourage conservation, but the, with the new rate structure, um, with the, I guess, the, the right to demand costs in going forward. And then also same, kind of echoing what the, Wes May was saying is that, you know, hopefully, we're not gonna be able, we're not gonna be seeing a need to change as close future if there is a change with the Dallas, you know, water structure as well. And that's kind of the concern that I had as well. If we're gonna change this to a block structure and then come back again and say, well, because something happened, we're gonna have to change it again pretty soon. And is that something that's taken into consideration as well with the structure? I'm not sure if that makes sense.
I'm not sure that I'm understanding the question. Um, so if the question is, will the rates change within the blocks? That is more than likely yes, because Dallas and Water, Dallas Water Utilities and TRA are continually increasing their rates. And we just, we are more in a maintenance stage. We don't have the growth that we used to have. And so we have been passing along those rate increases, um, as necessary. We haven't had a rate increase. The last one was in 2018, so 2019, 2020 and 2021 did not have rate increases, um, that were passed along. Um, if the question is, would we implement this type of structure and then need to revert back to another one? I mean, I, I would be hesitant to say, um, I think the wave of the future is the block rate structure for conservation because of the area that we live in and the tendencies for droughts.
Thank you.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
For being here. Um, and I do too also love your enthusiasm and um, your presentation on water. I'm, I'm just gonna think out loud here for a second. You know, the, the study that was done was for 2020. And um, water usage obviously was at a probably all-time high. But also, people were quarantined as of March, which then I would think added to that, right? Like, everybody's home, kids were home from school, so just overall usage. I mean, I think you're right. I think in the sense of block rate, it will be something of the future. I guess I just, I'm trying to think if the 2020 data is the right data to use or is this something we continue to monitor?
So, um, they don't only use 2020. We provided five years of historical data.
We did, okay.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So they're, they're using it on more than just one year. And that, that's because, you know, when we, when we set budgets, we set it on, you know, what is an average year? Because you're gonna have years that have lots of rain and years that are really hot and you don't want to set it to one extreme or the other. So they're looking, they looked at multiple years when, when they're coming up with the rate structure. And then they projected it out, um, through 20, uh, 2025, I think is what we showed you. Um, so they did the five years. I would also, um, I would like to let you know that it was interesting. We, we also saw reduced water from our commercial customers. There were some offices that had no water usage because, and we went out and checked it and it was because the offices were closed. People were working from home, so they weren't in the office building.
Right. That, that, that's a good date, I think. But then I think at the same time too, I would echo Councilmember Gary's comment about, you know, would there be opportunities still to, um, opportunities of applying some of this to some of our um, industrial, you know, areas because of, like you said, irrigation. Um, and, and I think there are times when, I mean, you, it may be raining and still they're, you know, watering, um, in that space. So that, that might be an area worth looking at. And I just, you know, that, that's a, a big part of our community is businesses in, in this industrial area, so.
So am, am I hearing that maybe the consensus is to include the irrigation meters? If we roll something like this out, not just residential, but residential and irrigation?
Absolutely.
I, I would be in favor.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree. I heard Mark um, say absolutely too. Um, the, um, at the, when, when someone is running their business and if they use water as part of their um, production cycle or something like that, I mean, that kind of is what it is. But if, um, if you can segregate irrigation, um, and that's really, especially in the summer months, the area that we have the most problem, correct?
Yes.
Um, that would be beneficial if, if, um, if you, if you believe the data that you have um, is consistent with, um, I don't want to just say, okay, let's, let's do that. But if, that maybe that might be phase two if you don't have the data.
No, I, uh, I did speak with Willdan, um, and talked to him, uh, about irrigation meters. And he, they have the data, they can, they can help us.
Okay.
Incorporate that. Um, and we could, we could do that with, with this rollout.
I'd like, John, just wanted to make sure, um, you know, water and wastewater are two of the areas in the city that are pretty much different from all the other services that we provide, because we're just providing a pass-through service. Now, it gets, it's not quite that easy because we also provide for the infrastructure that is the city's responsibility. But it had been something like 20 years up until 2018 that we had had a rate increase. We had been absorbing that as a city. So, you know, for, you know, at this point, we're on a kind of a cost-neutral basis. But if DR, if Dallas Water Utilities or TRW, you know, had a rate increase, then we wouldn't necessarily have to immediately apply a rate increase to the citizens. But at some point, um, yes, we'll have to be following their, their trend.
So, just following up on what Wes just said. Are we still on a, just a, I guess, recovering costs in terms of the charges being, um, the charges that we have, just passing it, passing it on to the, um, this resident? Is that, is that what, what it is? We're not making any profit on this in terms of?
So, um,
Well, when I-
Profit is not necessary. Profit is not necessarily, but we do, part of the, the revenue is for future infrastructure as well. We have to have reserves.
Okay.
Um, for those one-time things that happen. Um, and unfortunately, water finds its way to do whatever it wants to do. But, um, so to say, this is what it costs to, to bring it in and bring it out of Capel, this is what we charge? That's not exactly true, because there is a maintenance, um, piece in there as well and a reserve piece. But it's all in its own bucket, separate and apart, so it's well-tracked.
Later this year, we're going to be, we'll be discussing a, a pump station that you'll hear lots more about. And that funding of that pump station partially comes from this, uh, maintenance fee that she's talking about.
So I have one more question.
First, Kim, did we miss something?
Well, I was just, I was just going to mention, you know, um, I just, a, a broader picture is, um, you know, it's the Dallas Water Utility cost, the TRA cost. It's the maintenance and operations, um, of the system that we have to do. And it is the maintenance of the infrastructure. It's, um, it's replacing the infrastructure. You know, we had one of the causes of our flow going up, um, was an, an influent infiltration issue where we found that there was a sewer pipe that had, had damage to it, and it took us a while to locate that. And then once we found it, you know, we had to replace that. And that was, I think, $900,000. And so, you know, being in a growth and our, our infrastructure is aging, part of what Public Works has done is prepared, you know, what do we need to do to maintain our infrastructure? And what bonds do we need to, to issue projects for? And, and so the rates need to cover that also.
Yeah, and, and forgive me for my lack of knowledge in terms of how this works, right? But in terms of the usage of the water, when you, let's just say, use 10,000 gallons of usage, and we have, I guess, you know, for the sewage-wise, that 10,000, if it actually goes down, are we, are we, do we measure that 10,000 gallon that's actually used within the house that goes down? Or is that?
No, um, we can only meter water going into the home. We can't meter the wa, the wastewater going out. There, there's no meters on that.
Okay, but it's just a set structure in terms of how much we charge for the, I guess, sewage?
So, right, so if commercial customers pay, um, they pay the $2.24 per thousand gallons of water used for sewer. Residential customers are currently paying, uh, a, the $2.24 per thousand gallons of water used up to 14,000 gallons. So if they used 20,000 gallons of water, they only pay sewer on the, the first 14,000. And that, that's a piece that we're, um, looking at and studying. Um, we, we are going to lower that. And over time, um, the step rate study shows lowering that to 9,000 gallons.
And that's regardless whether they have a pool or not?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just for informational purposes, Kim, where are we at with the days reserve versus our goal?
Um, oh, you would ask me that? Um, I know that we, I believe it was 224 days versus 180 days.
So the goal's 180 days and we're at 224?
Yes.
Okay, can you explain the reserve a little bit?
Um, ex- explain the 100, why we want the 180 days?
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the, what we, what we try to do is have 180 days of expend, of water sewer expenses set in, um, in, in the reserve. And so that's for emergency situations. Um, as I said, you know, the, the sewer, the sewer line, I'm sorry. The sewer line that, that was damaged, um, not only did we have to pay the 900,000 for that, but we also incurred $1.1 million additional, um, costs from TRA for our increase in flow to them. And so that, that reserve is for, you know, those emergency-type situations. Um, it can also be used, you know, if there, if there's a project that comes up and we need to go ahead and get started on it, it can be used for that. Did I answer your question, Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, well, everything that I wrote down, somebody else asked. So, um, is there any other questions? Um, how do we feel about the block? Mark? I can't see.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea, although looking at my portal here, um, I'm going to definitely be stung on, uh, June, July, and August and based upon last year's, uh, information, but.
You're going to learn, control that.
Well, you're right. And actually, I have a, a, a smart, um, uh, irrigation system, and you can actually see how, um, the impact of rainfall uh, really, uh, impacts your overall usage. Like, in September, we got six and three-quarters inches of rain, and my usage was just 47.95 gallons. But then in August, it was 24,000 gallons, because we only got three-quarters of an inch. So, um, it's, it, it's, it's a good idea. Um, but, you know, I think in the long run, like, um, um, we said it's going to help comfort, um, uh, conservation and then, um, you know, keep us from jumping up to that next level with the DWU.
So is everybody?
Does everybody? I think the block structure is the way to go from a conservation standpoint. I'm not looking forward to telling, to hearing from my wife at the end of the, the summer months, but that's okay. We'll work that one out. Kim, I had one other question. I was looking back through my notes. You had a chart, um, this one, actually, I think. Yes, thank you. You must have been reading my mind. Why, why, it looks like to me that we're actually lower than our neighboring cities. Why is that?
Um, I cannot answer that. I, I don't know how they set their rates. Um, I, I, you know, we, we compare to see how we are in the market, but there are so many unknowns. We don't know the, this, we don't know how they take care of their infrastructure. We don't know if they're setting rates that are adequate to take care of their, uh, their infrastructure. We don't know if they're catching up like we did back in, um, back when we did the first rate, uh, increase in 2015. We, you know, we did a 15% rate increase, because we hadn't increased rates over, for 21 years. So I don't really know what their situation is to be able to answer that. Um, I, I, I provide this information just so you can see where we are in the market. Does that?
No, I, I think that's great. I think we're, I think we're very well-positioned here. So it, you know, it's a very favorable, uh, comparison. So thank you very much.
I loo, I looked at Grapevine and Farmer's Branch, um, and I thought of the age of their city versus ours. Um, as far as the, we have parts of our city that's, that's old, but they have a whole lot more.
It's a lot older.
It's a lot older.
Could be.
Could be. Anyway, okay, did you have one more thing?
I, I just had a comment. Before you actually came up with this block structure plan, I was actually talking to one of the staff before this came up. And I was telling them, it just, this makes sense in the sense that, uh, because, I mean, I, I jog across this one house in the morning, and I come, go all the way around in the park, that's like 30 minutes, right? And the water irrigation is still on, so I thought, I, I just don't understand it. And it's all over the street and sidewalks. So this actually makes sense in terms of trying to, you know, make people be aware of conserving the water, not watering more than 30, 40 minutes in that same spot. So, thank you so much for coming up with this.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you have what you need?
Yes, so, uh, my understanding is that I should bring back a rate structure that is an increasing block rate structure for residential and irrigation meters.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you for, um, shifting also from yesterday till today. And I agree that, um, this is a great way to start the day. High energy on water. You know, I'd have never thought that I would have ever said that before, but very exciting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kim staying with us.
Oh, good.
As we go into the next subject, um, yeah, I, I affectionately called it from a, from a residential-commercial equity, uh, question. And when, uh, when we were taking a look at our, at our rates, uh, as Kim knows, I started asking some different questions about the way that our, uh, rates and revenues were set. And, and let me begin with, uh, much like our residential rates and our commercial rates are the lowest. We are at the bottom. And so this, I'm, what I'm about, ready to talk about isn't a matter of like, oh, here's an opportunity. I want you to just understand, when it comes from an economic development standpoint, water and sewer rates aren't even on the table, you know, as part of a discussion when we're talking about recruiting to Capel. So what I asked Kim and Will Dan to take a look at is, much like y'all talk about our property tax split between commercial and residential and the, and, you know, the equity and how does it work and everything, I asked, uh, Kim to work with our group, uh, Will Dan, to look at, well, how are our revenues set up in terms of our usage? And, um, so this is a philosophical discussion. You know, we're doing what we're doing right now, just kind of like you mentioned on the irrigation. But, um, if, if you'll notice, basically, I'll just cut to the chase. Our residential customers' water usage is about 60%, and our commercial usage is about 40%. We've kind of heard those numbers before, right? Yeah. Um, but here's the deal. The revenue generated is split 55% from, um, um, residential and 45% from, I'm sorry, 55% from residential and 45% from commercial. And remember with the structure and everything that's set up. So we talk about rates all the time in terms of, uh, raising our rates, and we talk about the residential side the predominant most of the time, right? We never really talk about the commercial rates in general. And when you look at our, our structure from a, uh, customer-based standpoint, it's a little bit different. It's about, uh, I think it's 70% of the billing units are residential, uh, with the other 30% being commercial, right? So what we started talking about is, well, is there a way to relieve future or reduce future increases on our residents by having some nominal increase on our commercial? And the answer to that question is yes. There is a way for us to do that. And you notice in the memo, it talked about, so everybody hear me, we are not recommending this. Uh, but, uh, in the memo, it talks about even to get to the, uh, 25th percentile in the market, right? We're not even talking about average, but even the 25th percentile, we could raise our rates over 50% on the commercial side. Again, we're not recommending that. But that's just how much in the marketplace, from a competitive standpoint, you know, how, to your point, to the other cities, we're, gosh, we seem really low, you know, compared to them. And so we were just, we just wanted to have a conversation. Is this something that you would even ask us or think about looking at as a way to, if you will, balance rate increases with commercial being a factor that we have never really used to help reduce the rate increases for the residential? That's the question. I'm not telling you what the rates are. We haven't, you know, necessarily dived into this. We're not even talking about including this in April. This is from a standpoint of looking forward, uh, as from a budget standpoint, as we get into next year. Is this something that you would like us to at least explore so that you have that option? Right now, we've never presented you the option. So it's just going to take some work on our part to really make that come together, if you'd like us to do that. That's the question.
Yeah, Mike, I think it's interesting, uh, if we look, if we look at the information we had last night and tonight, you know, there's often a perception, our tax rate's the highest, uh, we're the worst as far as, uh, homestead exemption. Our fees are high. We saw last night, our homestead exemption kind of in the middle, tax rates on the lower side, et cetera. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing everything we can to lower it. And that's the case here. I think if we're lower than other cities, but we're paying our costs and we're creating reserves for future work, then great, let's stay low. There's no reason to increase. But I do think from a philosophy perspective, if on a proportional basis, the businesses are not paying their proportionate share, when we have those times when Kim comes in and says, okay, TRA's gone up on water as opposed to raising all rates, I think we ought to have a philosophy of increasing the businesses proportionally larger until at least we have equity there.
I'd hate to see us kick off and penalize our smaller businesses, but if we could leverage that block rate structure on the commercial, the larger commercial users to perhaps tilt it toward the larger users more than the small users, and I could certainly get on board with that. I, I think equalizing it out is a, we, yes, we need, yes, we do need to look at doing that gradually over time. And my, my suggestion is that we look at, uh, leveraging the larger commercial users first and then seeing how that rolls down into the smaller ones.
Mark?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, when we were going back to the, um, rate increases back in 2015, didn't we do something associated with the meter size, uh, for commercial, uh, having a, a different rate?
Yes, Councilmember Hill, you're correct. Um, there is the, the base rate for water and sewer, for water is based on the size of the meter. So, residentials have the, um, 5/8 inch, that's $21. And then, you know, uh, commercial can have an 8-inch meter, and that's a few hundred dollars is in their base rate. So there is some, uh, difference there.
And going to Wes's idea, if you're a smaller commercial user, you're probably going to have a smaller meter, like a 1-inch meter versus, uh, a 4, 6, or 8-inch. So somehow, we could use that meter size to, um, perhaps, uh, reflect, uh, the increased rate, in my word.
Y- yes, um, I would say though, that at, for example, a strip center on Sandy Lake, it's an 8-inch meter that is then sub-metered. The owners sub-meter it, so they're getting, um, you know, a larger, the larger cost. Um, I think, um, most commercial, your larger commercial have a separate irrigation meter, and so they would be, um, incurring the higher block rate structure through that. Um, I'm not, and I would want to check to make sure, because I know we can set rates differently for residence and commercial. I don't know if we can set rates different within the same class, so I would want to check that out.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
Kim, I have, do, Kim, do you know how many commercial units we have?
We have, um, it's, uh, about 1,700 commercial accounts.
1,700 and 13,000 residents?
Um, no, the, 13,000 is the total.
Okay. So that's only 11?
11,300. Roughly, those are just round numbers.
Thank you.
Additional questions? I agree. I believe it's a good idea to, to put that in your toolbox and, um, I, 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 we always seem, because of the people that are, are probably most vocal, tend to talk primarily about residential and trying to keep it as low as possible. But if, and it may be advantageous, and it obviously is advantageous economically if we're not even talking about water on the, when people come in. So, um, the 25th percentile was surprising, or under the 25th percentile was surprising. But I, in my head, that had to do more with our size or something, I'm not really sure. But, um, I would say that's a great item to have in the toolbox to consider when you are looking to, uh, increase rates.
Okay, well, we'll work on that as it relates to beyond April, or beyond the presentations that Kim's coming up. This is more for consideration in the fall. As you know, we go through the budget process and we talk about it. When we're talking about the enterprise funds, that's when we start talking about the revenues, knowing that the study's going to come. Just as a reminder, we base the revenues on the current rate structure because we don't know, there's no assurance that you're adopting a new rate structure. So that's how we go forward. Then we come in the fall and we talk to you about implementation after the first of the year. So that's how this will work out. So don't expect to see something right away on this. It'll be coming to you during the fall, probably. Okay? We'll keep you updated, but that's where it is. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Kim. Appreciate you giving up Saturday morning. Third time was a charm.
Yes, thanks. Goodbye.
Bye. Okay, now then, we have council discussion with, nope. 2040. We already did D, sorry. Now 2040.
Turn this over to Ms. Tracy.
And here she comes.
Okay. Well, good morning, Mayor and Council.
Is your thing on?
Yes. I'm red. Am I good? Oh. Sharing would be good. Okay. I'm sorry, hang on a second then. Okay. Okay, here we go, zoom, recording. Share screen. This one? No. Well, in my last presentation, I did reference that I was fighting with technology. I'm still fighting with technology and thank goodness we've got Julian here to help me. You know, there's, there's nothing more intimidating than presenting after Kim Tien, because she's about as good as we have in terms of content and preparation as well as enthusiasm and all of that. So I will try to match her enthusiasm today for our Vision 2040 Strategic Plan Prioritization Discussion. The first thing I want to cover is, why is any of this important? Why do we go through this exercise to prioritize our goals and our pillars based from our strategic plan? And really, this is providing the foundation for our annual work plan. And so this is an opportunity for the council to provide staff with feedback in terms of what you would like to see happen in the upcoming year. Every year, there's a little bit of variation. And as we'll kind of walk through here, there's a little bit of variation, but not a whole lot of movement away from where the priorities were identified for the previous year. But what we do each year is we take the priorities that we receive from the council. And then we start wrapping our work plan, our annual work plan, around each one of those pillars and goals that are identified as priorities. And we present that work plan to you as part of our budget process. And then we begin work on that work plan starting October 1. And so I've given you just a quick screenshot. I included that, not for us to read it or go through it, but just, we do have the work plan. It is part of what we include every year as part of our budget. Staff is actively working on the items that are in that work plan right now. And we will be bringing an update to the council probably in the mid-year. So either the next 5th Tuesday or probably March, April-ish to provide an update on where we are with a lot of those work plan items. And so that's why this is important, because it really does help us then map each year to continue to make progress through that strategic plan. It's a process that's worked really well for the council and the community and for us as staff for 2030. And so we've not tweaked that a whole lot, just knowing that we've had a lot of success there. Just a process refresher on what we have worked through to get to the priorities that are in front of you today. So we asked council to provide some feedback to us for each one of the goals and each one of the pillars on how much effort and resources need to go into each one of those items. And so it could fall into any one of three categories. So fallback, meaning it's not necessarily a high priority and we don't need to push a whole lot of time and resources towards that specific item. It can be status quo, where it just means we're really happy with the level of service that is being provided today or the effort and resources that are going into that today. And we'd like to see that continue for the upcoming year. And then emphasis, which just means, man, we would really, this is something that we want to see some tangible progress on. From a staff perspective, anything that's identified as emphasis, we're going to push a lot of time and resources towards and pay a lot of attention to for that upcoming year in terms of our work plan. So we've asked council to prioritize both the pillars and the goals. And one of the things that we talked about last year and that we have done fairly consistently dating back to 2030 is we include at least one goal for each, for 2030, it was at least one goal and objective for each strategy. And for 2040, it's at least one goal for each one of the pillars so that we are making progress, tangible progress for each part of the plan every year. And as you'll see, there are very clear pillars that are from a priority perspective, clear direction for us as staff. And so that is, that is very helpful for us as we start thinking about how we're going to plan our upcoming year.
Can I make one point?
Yes, please.
Because if I don't make it, Mike is going to.
Okay.
For those of you who are listening, and John, I just want to emphasize the fact that this is a, this is a exercise for the next fiscal year. We are looking at, we are already in this fiscal year, the budget is set. So one of the things that has happened in the past is, well, wait a minute. Two months ago, we said we really wanted you to focus in on this. What are you doing? And it's like, no, that is for the next fiscal year. So we are, we've already got our plan for this year and this is specifically for the next fiscal year.
Correct. And that's a, that's a great point. And it's, it's really indicative of how council has always handled things in terms of looking forward. I mean, at this point, 2021 is so last year and we're already moving forward to plan for next year. So that's a great point. Thank you. This is a, just a comparison to let us know how we have shifted just slightly in terms of the priorities for the pillars themselves. And so what you see on your screen here is the, the just gross averages for last year, how council rated each of the pillars last year and where they fell in those rankings versus where each one of those pillars rated for this year. And so you'll, you'll notice there's a couple of different changes there. Transportation dropped a little bit. Inclusive Community Fabric actually came up in terms of priorities. And so there is a little bit of a shift there. But by and large, clearly our top two priorities, those are, those are unchanged. And there's a lot of, each one of the goals in each one of those two pillars clearly came out as a priority for the majority of council. This is just a refresher to bring you back to where we currently are. So this is what we currently are working from and what we have currently wrapped our work plan around for this, this current year that we're in right now. Clearly, that, it's, it's just representative right now. That is really small print, so I'm not expecting y'all to be able to see that. What I do want to share with you, and I'm going to hop from this presentation to a different file. And if I pull this up. Oh, nope, where did it go? See, this is what happens when you let me have technology. Okay, let me see if I can make this larger. So the, the hard copy that is in front of you, please disregard that for right now. What I want to show you now. How do I, let me close this. Okay. So what we've got, what I wanted to show you here is if you look at the, this shows you what the top-rated goal for each pillar was. So if you look at the, the ones that are highlighted, and if you look at the ones that particularly are, let me get rid of this screen here. The ones that are highlighted in green on the screen there. And I don't know, can y'all read that? Is that, do I need to blow that up a little more? No, this is actually this year. Great question. I'm sorry. So I've moved forward to our ratings for this year. And so if you look at these, we've got our The green highlight. So what I want, what I want to focus on right now are the green highlights because each one of those green ones represents the top-rated goal for each one of those pillars. And so when we talk about making progress on each pillar each year, that's the goal under that pillar that we would be focusing on that came out highest rated for this upcoming year. Okay? And so then what we did, so if you recall back to last year, we did that same kind of exercise. And then we wanted to make sure that we did have everything covered. So we actually just flipped that process around. So we've got our top-rated goal for each pillar. And then if you'll notice, there are several goals particularly, particularly in pillar four and five.
Let's just for, in our printout, the color is yellow, which is establish Capel as a laboratory of learning.
Correct.
In your presentation is green. That's what you're talking about, right?
So this just represents the totality. If, when we get to the final version of what we are considering the priorities for this upcoming year, that's what's in front of you right now. This just shows you kind of how the sausage was made to get to there.
Okay.
So predict, if you look at, we go down to, for example, pillar four. Four and five. Now, clearly there are, if you look across at the ratings for four and five, you know, all of those, all of those goals, there are some of them that rate higher than, if you look at, for example, the highest rated goal under pillar one, wouldn't necessarily make the cut. And so what we wanted to do was make sure that clearly where the priorities were for council, that we're including those. So we really ended up just loading up pillar four and five with those additional goals, knowing that those were much highly, much higher rated than some of our other goals that were in the other pillars, just so we could have some representation there. Yes.
That's okay. That's a 20-year plan. We may spend a lot of time in one pillar the first five years and not as much in the others, right? So I mean, I love the idea of having one in each, but it doesn't bother me at all having four or five in itself.
Well, and for us, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And especially since the way, I don't, when I put my rating down, I wasn't doing it with a mindset that it was by pillar.
Right.
So I was, you know, just addressing it as a standalone item. So I, I think, yeah, it's fine as it stands, you know? Don't want to ignore the rest of it, but I think the methodology of doing the scoring is, is fair.
Okay. So I give you the different color shading here, just so you have kind of a visual representation of what was the highest rated for each pillar. And then the hard copy sheet that you got just combines everything together. It's the, it's the 12. So we have in our current year, there were 12 priorities in terms of goals that council had identified for this current year. There are 12 goals that are currently identified for next year. And so those are represented in your yellow, in the yellow, in the sheet that's in front of you right now.
Not getting down into the weeds here, but under pillar number four, we had one item that was a seven. And yet you also have the first two highlighted as well.
So what's in yellow are the top 12?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, so those got added because they were so far above. For example, the top-rated goal in pillar one was like a four something. I didn't want to ignore the high rating that council had identified for these two other goals for that particular pillar in four. Because clearly that was important to y'all.
So the, and the one in green is the, is the focus, because that's the highest one.
I found it interesting that there was only one that we all gave a seven to.
So these are the top 12, but giving priority to one in each pillar, which may skew which fit into the top 12.
Well, and so from our perspective, we're not necessarily looking at it like that. We can, if it's, if it's highlighted in yellow, we are going to push a lot of resources towards those. So yes. And so if I go back to, oh, nope. Let me let me pull this up again and then reshare to get back to this. By the time I end this presentation, I'm going to be really proficient at this, I hope, maybe.
And then you'll take a break and then you'll have to start all over again.
It'll be somebody else's turn. Okay. So if you'll look at the two, so on your sheet, if you look at the two goals that I've got the arrows next to, those are the, the ones that actually changed from last year in terms of, it was not a priority last year and has moved into a top priority for next year.
Any insight as to why?
Or what, what fell out?
Yeah, so if you look at pillar two, last year it was promote socialization and community cohesiveness. And that has now shifted to purposefully breaking barriers to inclusion. And then if you look on pillar six, last year it was build Capel's transportation system to connect to regional systems. And this year it has moved to create new modes of connectivity between Oasis Pockets.
See, but what, what's happened in the world this year?
Yep.
Just some of the social issues. I would say that makes sense going from pillar two, go four to goal three.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
I agree.
And I think the same thing can be said for pillar number six, with people staying at home, being much more concerned about your backyard, your backyard rather than across the street.
So at this point, I'd, I'd like to pause and maybe answer any more questions that council might have. If you're prepared to provide direction that this list in front of you for the highlights is representative of what you'd like to see us do and start our process at the staff level. We've got our retreat in February. And so that will be our first run to take this information and present it to directors so that then we can start wrapping our brains around what does that look like? So we'll be then working on the work plan that we'll bring to you for the budget.
So this is, sorry, Gary. This is, I guess, my eighth year, maybe ninth, I can't, eighth or ninth, going through this. And, and, you know, we've been refining this process. And where we're, where we've landed on this particular approach seems to be working quite well. You know, the city needs, you guys need some time to implement plans. And this is looking out long range enough that gives you the opportunity. This is completely consistent and it's coming directly out of the 2040 plan. So, you know, I, you know, we can always tweak numbers back and forth a little bit, but I, I think So, you know, I, you know, we can always tweak numbers back and forth a little bit, but I, I think from a, a global standpoint, this is a very solid way to move forward.
Yeah, I just want to, I agree. Wes, a question on a couple of items. Just looking through this the other night, trying to see areas where there were high marks by some, but not by others. And just to ask some questions, I don't mean to call anybody out. Item two, goal two, pillar two, goal two. Where, where John and Bijou had marked those seven. I want to ask a question about my perception of what that has been. Our discussion in the past, just to give some history, we got to a point where we had so many events that our staff was just worn out, especially in the fall and the spring. And so what we said is if we're going to add an event, we're going to take an event away. And we did some of that. So currently we have events like, and I just lost the name, the event in the fall, the kaleidoscope. We've got allies and community. We've got events at the library around this. So my question is, would we want to change some of those out based on the scoring? Or add additional events? And if so, what would we take out? I just want to make sure that I'm being responsive to y'all seven.
Well, are you asking, do we have enough programs today? Or we need to cut from what we have today?
My, my question is based on a seven from you there, it would indicate that we need more, seven means we need to do more, more events that foster inclusion and celebrate diversity. Or does that seven mean let's really emphasize the ones we have more so and, and maybe grow them or something? I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. So from my opinion, let's emphasize what we have today and keep on working on what we have.
Okay.
And if we have a room for improvement or an opportunity to add more, of course that will add cost.
Or necessitate deleting others.
Or yes, delete others. Yes. So yeah, keep it the way we are today. Emphasize on what we are doing today. And that's a good start. That, that's where I like to see and where we are today.
That helps me. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, it's pretty much what Bijou said as well, but also what Wes Mays has said. I took that one part as, as itself and then rated on based on just that, not in comparison to others. So that's, that was my thinking in rating all, all of these.
I just have a
Go ahead.
quick comment. Well, did you have anything else, Gary? Sorry. I'm, um, so first of all, I appreciate you kind of looking at where some areas where people like kind of were different. And so I actually wanted to, there's, there's a few where I actually had some sevens where nobody else had sevens or, or all they had was fours, right? Fours and fours or ones or whatever maybe, which is fine. Yes. See, I'm being positive. Very cute. I expect green lights from now on. Um, no, I, I think it's because, um, you know, this is just a, an overall comment. And so something I think that staff's already taken into consideration, but just want to highlight it is that, you know, as we looked at a few areas that shifted, we're also considering that so much in the world has shifted, right? And then there, and we're all kind of in a different place and there's still so much uncertainty. And so there are some areas that I highlighted. When I talk about like diversifying learning and enrichment opportunities available in Capel, I put that as a seven or promoting, what was the other one? Or like perpetuate a learning environment. There was the other one was about health and happiness. My highlight in both of those areas was because there are different ways of learning now and we're finding that the virtual opportunities, right, are what our people are embracing more, right? We want to have opportunities and we want to have options. Maybe that's the word I'm looking for. And so, you know, as the, you know, I, I know our library does a lot and our city does a lot, but just to think through our programming and what we offer because even as things start to stabilize over time, which we don't know when that will be, we still want to provide opportunities and options and not exclude people because they can't be there in person, right? Or whatever it may be. So I want to think through that from a learning perspective of what we offer. On the, on the health part, as y'all know, I've always been a huge advocate for health and wellness in our community. And I think one of the things that we're seeing right now, and I, I serve on several committees for the school board too, is there's a lot of depression in our community, a lot of depression everywhere. And and so I want to think through that too, whether it be programming from the core that's offered online for people to, you know, just listen into or exercise or meditation or whatever it may be. I just, you know, I know people are outside more and I love that in the summer and on the days that we have nice weather, but sometimes we don't. And I just want to, I, I say that as a holistic comment. I'm not, I'm not saying we have to shift anything. I think the, the priorities are great. I just want to also, as we're thinking of what we're doing and programming, that there's just a lot happening right now. And I just want to think through that, right? People are, are at home and maybe they just don't even know what to do or where to go. And let's just kind of take that into consideration. That kind of, so that's, that's where some of my numbers came from, was thinking through what has happened in 2020 and where are we still a year later?
Yep. Well, and I guess maybe to, to your point, particularly on the community mental health side of things. I mean, that is something that I know that we've talked about in our office and that is a real concern. And I think there is some opportunity for us to kind of help the community in that regard. So yeah, that's a, a point well taken.
And I, oh, go ahead. Well, as a follow-up, as we talk with community members and community organizations, they are very interested in knowing where they can help. And almost every single time, community wellness, mental health, those types of things come into play. You know, food security, shelter security, and then mental health are probably the, the major ones. So one of the things that we're trying to do, and the mental health thing is probably the hardest because nobody quite knows what to do unless someone is actually able to recognize that they have an issue or might have an issue and then reach out. Cause you can't, I mean, you can say, you know, here, we're going to have a mental health day. And what we choose as a, as an option for mental health may be the thing that they hate the most. So the community is talking about it. And I think the city is a part of that conversation. And to me, that, you know, yeah, there's only one thing in there on the laboratory of learning, but that is part of that. And, but I do, this is all more about connectivity. And I think every time we have an opportunity to connect and a citizen does connect, I'm hopeful that that means that we are helping with the mental health piece of it.
Right. And just a little quick, cause I know you had your hands up. And I think that's right. I think it's the, it's the engagement, the connectivity and giving people just opportunities. I think of our seniors. There's no senior center for them to go to.
Yeah, that's hard.
And that is hard, right? And, and thankfully like for my mom, I know that she drives and she can go to the YMCA. So she at least gets out, but there's a lot that their, their family used to drop them off at the senior center or not pick them up till the end of the day and they don't have a place to go, right? And I know that we're trying to be creative. That, so that's all it is. It's just, let's find ways to connect and be creative.
John.
Thank you. You know, just like I guess Wes Mays has talked about how he's been doing this for nine years, but I, I guess the survey has been taken, what, every year? No? So, okay. Yeah. Right. So it has been. And I'm guessing that also, just like last year, when it was taken from this year, a couple of things were changed, right? And that will be the case even year before that and so forth? So what happens when it does change and you have actually focused, you know, on those particular set of given priorities? And then come next year, some of them have changed. So what happens then?
Well, I, I think the, the level of change that we see year to year is fairly incremental. And so there, at least in the three years that I've been here, outside of the fact that we broke from an old, a previous strategic plan that we kind of buttoned up and finished and transitioned to a whole new strategic plan. I mean, last year was our first year to go through this exercise with the new plan. So that was a wholly different than shift for the staff because it was a whole new group of pillars and a whole new group of goals. But year over year, this, the shifts that we see are very similar probably to what's on your sheet here. So it's, it's incremental. So it's not a wholesale, oh my gosh, we stop what we're doing right now. We have to regroup and refocus because we're now going in a wholly different direction. I'm not experienced that since I've been here. So maybe I can toss that to Mike in terms of some additional context for previous to three years ago.
So one of the things we talked about is things take time. So to your question, I'll use some specifics. What will happen out of the work plan? I'll, I'll use 2030 as an example. We would identify the design and engineering to Beltline. That would show up in the, you know, in the plan. We're coming to you now almost four years later from when that probably showed up on the plan and we're going to have Beltline. So, so the best way to answer the question is, once the train leaves the station, we keep moving in that particular direction, doing with ongoing work related to whatever it is that these particular outcomes or results that you're expecting. So it's the outcome and the results. It's not just because it's this one year. It's what are we trying to get to? And some things we can finish in a year, some things we can't finish in a year. When we finish, I, the reports that we give you, we say complete. If it's still something that's ongoing, we're going to tell you that it's ongoing and we're going to continue working on that. So this, and, and the great thing about the plan, I mean, they're all associated with the same vision, right? They're all associated with going in the same direction. And so the work that we do is all pointed towards that particular end. Sometimes things just take a little longer to get there, but it doesn't mean that we stop unless you tell us to stop. And that, I am not familiar since 2012 that you've ever told us to stop on whatever, you know, direction you've given us related to, this is the goal that we have. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I, I would add, I mean, just like the 2030 plan, this is a 20-year plan. So the items on this plan really shouldn't change until we're finished with it. We may change the priorities. But the operational stuff, I mean, we're here to set policy and these are policy priorities. The operational stuff like dealing with COVID and dealing with 334 and all of that happens in addition to this, but following these philosophies. So to me, this is our big picture to staff of philosophically, where do we want to get in the next year? And then y'all got to go figure out all the things to do to make it happen, right?
There's nothing in here about our roadways, our waterworks, our fire, our police. And those are clearly very important. But this is, you know, this is the, the, the vision of the, of where we're going to be in the future. Like Mike said, including all of the, I don't want to, the word I was going to use was, was routine functions as well.
That brings that picture to mind that the operations is like the base. And then these are the pillars of the base. So operations and, you know, utility billing and all of that kind of stuff is the basis that we need to do. And then these are the kinds of things that will over time change just a little bit and move up the pillars on, in these areas. Does that make sense? Okay, good. Any other items on here that someone wants to talk about that they thought was a seven versus?
Yeah, I marked down all of Brianna's sevens where nobody else did. And then I went down and marked all of my ones where nobody else did. So I had a couple of them. And sitting here looking at it, it's not going to change the grand scheme of things because it, it's, it's just a, and it's just a few percentage points, but the one that I really, I really feel bad about, I, I misread the thing that was explored and refit refurbishment of older housing stock. I missed the explore word at the beginning. And, you know, that one. And it's, it's one of the priorities. So, you know, it means we're, we're going to work on it. So everything's still good. I wouldn't put a one down there if I had really read the explore portion of it.
Oh, you thought we were going to refurbish it?
So. So
I'm just a disruptor.
Bijou?
Yeah. So the only one we all scored seven is explore new options for 55 plus that maintain high standard. We scored that last year as high as well. So staff had two years to think about, you know, certain things. What can we do to fulfill that goal or accomplish that goal? Do we have anything concrete that we have some future oriented committees also there now?
Right.
And that was really the establishment of the committee was the first thing that we did.
Right.
And then
They, they are coming close to making some recommendations to bring to you.
Okay.
So I appreciate staff putting around it, but that is why the council created the Ford Board for this specific reason, to address that issue. So we are supporting the Ford Board and all the work that they've been doing. And my understanding is they're going to be coming to council within the next several meetings with some recommendations.
At least some updates kind of where they have been. I know they've been doing a lot of work. They've, they've split up into subgroups and have, you know, started really digging into the issue of residential housing in Capel. If you'll recall, they, with the smart board, we had the conversation about bringing future IQ in to help them then do some advanced scenario planning. And so I know that is on their radar. And so they, they've been very active. But some of that, to Mike's point, some of that just takes time in terms of working our way through that because it is a, it is a complex issue. That's the reason we, we created the board. That's why council created that board to continue that community conversation to make sure that anything that came out of that really represented what the community wanted.
Yeah, I'm glad they are coming forward with some kind of presentation.
Yeah. What are we doing?
Yeah.
And they've been meeting every month to Miami.
Yes.
I mean, Smart City Board did a presentation to us, so we heard from them. Thank you.
And I think that just kind of emphasizes the fact that we're all kind of anxious to hear what they have to say. But I think we've all also gone, okay, it's COVID. So any other questions or comments about any particular item?
Mayor, what we'll do, as Tracy said, is we in two weeks, staff will come together, present the information that we have here and then start formulating different ideas and concepts and those types of things. And then as we start into the budget process, we'll be able to come back to you and talk to you a little bit more about how these things apply to what we're looking at for eventual presentation in the fall for adoption of the work plan that goes along with it, that's in support of the budget. So, Mayor, that's all we have for 2040.
Yes, sir. Can you turn on your mic and?
I can't speak up any louder. How's this?
Much better.
Better? Okay. On one, two, three, four, we might think about changing that color. I can't read. I can't read the highlighted.
Pillar four.
I had to get a magnifying glass to read that. So maybe this burnt orange can be changed to maroon or something like that. So that it can be, so it can be more easily read. But outside of that, that's.
So noted, thank you for that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's everything on the agenda? Hot diggity dog. Any other comments or items that you want us to think about for future meetings or any comments about what we have covered? Man, I think we're just so efficient. Oh, yes, sir.
At the suggestion of Wes Mays after just last night's meeting, you know, I understand in terms of the loss of revenue because of the sales tax structured and so forth. And I get it in terms of what was coming in and what's going out. But at the same time, as you have mentioned before, in terms of the discussion that's been going on with the homestead exemption. And I understand that if we do across the board, that is a significant impact on the budget. But at the same time, I think it's something that we have been discussing for a long time that there, we should really seriously look into somehow, whether it be just the senior citizens or one sector, move forward with the idea of trying to present, come up with an idea of a change moving forward. So that is something that I wish we would just look into it a little deeper moving forward. Understood. I know it's, I know I'm giving.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is a conversation that we have every year. And we do have it. And it is something that in today's environment is a little bit more difficult than it had been, you know, maybe when the city was growing.
And I understand and I, the way we approached in 2019, or I'm sorry, last year, I applaud the staff, Mike, you know, you did a great job. But at the same time, I'm going to give you another hard task and to look into further to see if they, if you could come up with a solution or probable solution in terms of moving forward with the long discussed, you know, homestead exemption.
So I would say, I mean, as far as the seniors, they get a bigger exemption. We looked last night, we think they're at 23% or so. So.
On the average house, yeah.
Right, on average house. I mean, I think we talk about this every May before, I mean, the challenge is, I think we need to get enough budget information from staff to kind of see how big the hole is that we're going to have without adding to it. And then I think our process typically is to say, okay, what would we, what would it look like if we added 2%, 10% or whatever to the homestead exemption? And then staff has to come back to us and say, okay, we're already freezing salaries or cutting whatever to meet the sales tax dilemma. This is what else we would have to cut if we extended the homestead exemption. And then it's council, we've got to agree, are we willing to cut services or cut whatever to get there?
And I understand that.
And the problem that we have every year is the budget is not far enough developed till July, but this decision's got to be made in May. And that's the challenge that we have every year trying to get it done.
And I understand that too. So I'm giving a, you know, asking Mike to go.
Well, no. So here's the question. I'm not going to go pursue that until the council tells me that they want to have that consideration made. I'm going to continue to work on reducing expenses, but at the same time, I've got reducing revenues. And I've got requests for doing different things. But the council so far does not have a majority that says, go make 6%, 10%. So until the council speaks, which so far they haven't spoken to go do that, I'm not going to do that.
Understood.
So when you ask that question, I just want to be real clear, John. Don't have an expectation of me and our staff to develop a financial plan based on an increased homestead exemption because that's not the instruction that the council's giving.
Understood. And that was more so of the other council to take that into consideration as well.
But in terms of subject matter, that's my point. When we gave you the information last night, until council does something with that, we are not going to do any more with it. There's no more information for me to provide you unless there's some question. Like Bijou asked me a question this morning, I'm going to get that out to y'all. But, you know, respectfully, it's not my call. I will respond to what the council says. And council has not said for me to go back to staff to do anything with it.
So, so let me, let me add, or not add, my comment. Unless there is a change that we can identify, there's not an attractive method to move forward with, with what you're suggesting. And in fact, to compound it, we've got a decrease in sales tax revenue in 3.334 that are on top of it. So if there's something that we're missing, you know, new is always good and change is always good or usually good. But, you know, bring something that, that we can work on, that we as a group can work on, that we as a group can understand and embrace.
So, John, I've been bringing up since I got elected on homestead exemption. That's why Mike is laughing because I'm the one asking all these questions. Even after last night's discussion, I came back this morning and asked Mike a follow-up question. I'll, I'll say that what I asked him so that everybody knows what I asked and he's going to provide some answers. So the average house value here in Cappell is $400,000 roughly. The seniors, a mayor indicated three section you can check, the senior, disabled. What was the third one?
Veteran.
Veterans. They get $75,000 right off the bat. So that brings down to 325. On top of that, Cappell is offering 5% homestead. So 5% of that, 400,000 is 20,000. That brings down to 3.05 on the value of the person who's paying the tax. And he's going to confirm that. So that's for the seniors, veterans and disabled. For regular folks, it's only 20,000. So that's where the discussion is, how much are we going to increase that homestead exemption? I am in favor and supportive of increasing that. But the challenges that we are facing, like Wes May just mentioned, is the sales tax revenue reduction and also the rule 3334. So we need to come up with a formula as a council to move forward on this. So that takes some thought process, creativity. And we don't want reduced services. At the same time, everybody's looking for quality of life here. And that's one of the agenda that we all talk about, high quality of life here in Cappell. So we need to find a way, a creative way to bring that up. Mike just mentioned, it takes four votes to get it passed. So that's where the real issue is.
I would add, I'm, I'm an advocate. I think over time, we've, we've got to do that. It's going to be interesting to me, and again, I won't be here after May, but to see how, how you can do it. I mean, last year, the staff did a really good job of cutting expenses, nine, $10 million to get us through. But many of those cuts are not sustainable. You know, I don't think we can tell staff forever, you're not going to get raises and maintain the staff that we have. We can't forever say we're not going to do some capital infrastructure projects that have to happen. So I think that's our challenge this year, is how do we deal with this additional loss of revenue without having those one-year tricks that are not going to be sustainable? So I think we should have the exemption discussion every year. I'm concerned that this year it's going to be particularly difficult because it digs a deeper hole than we've already got. Now, if we can get stabilized around this new sales tax revenue going forward, we've got growth in appraisals, then I think you could start to raise it a percent or two a year over time. But reality is, when you look versus other cities, we're not in a bad position. So I don't quite feel the pressure others do. And I think the other thing, and I'm sorry to preach, but, you know, 20 years ago, we said, what was it, 80% of our tax base was residential? And we'd be able to force that down to less than, than 50%. It comes a point, if, if you're giving that break to residents, businesses see that, they're going to pay the difference. And if our West Side doesn't stay full because we've got a higher tax burden on the businesses, then eventually the residences suffer because we're losing tax base over there. So all of those have to be, I think, factored in. The reality is those businesses don't vote. So it's easy to say, let's take care of the residents. But the residents will suffer eventually if those warehouses go empty.
Well, they, they do vote with their feet. And, and, you know, we've, we've started, you've already had the opportunity to hear a couple of the scenarios when we play those out. So that's, that's an intangible that's very difficult to put your, your finger on because it, it's an unintended consequence that we make a decision to do something today, yet eight years from now, we see, you know, our largest sales tax provider deciding to leave town. And, you know, that, that's, that's an action that occurred eight years before.
And I was just going to say, like, I understand exactly where you're coming from, just to echo, you know, Gary, like, I'm an advocate as well. I know Bijou just said, since he's been on council, he's been, you know, advocating for this or talking about it. But just know that even those of us who have been on council even before that, we have to. So this isn't a, you know, this isn't a divisive issue. We're all on the same page. We're all talking the same language and we all are trying to figure out what is the best way forward. This isn't a, you don't have four council members because it's not that we're, we're not in favor of it. It's because we've talked about it at length for years of what can we do? What can we not do? How does this, how does one thing affect another? Where are we as a whole? We are, you know, staff has, has come and, and explained to us in many different ways of what the scenarios look like. And, and you're right, I mean, as Bijou mentioned, there's, there's got to be maybe potentially a creative way. And but we have done everything that we can and we continue to look at that. Like it's, it's like you said, I mean, council member, or I guess Gary said it, we talk about it every single year. So please know that the 13 years I've been on, we've been talking about it and trying to figure out. And Karen can speak to that as well.
Yeah. Really, I, in today's day and time, I think it's the word predictability. At this moment in time, staff is budgeting, but it's not real predictable. Because we, we think, you heard Mike talk about the rule. And as it's going to be effective, we are guessing that it's going to reduce our sales tax 50%. But until it actually goes in, we don't really know what it's going to be. And so what if it's 70%? We don't know. And so in my head, now is not the time because we don't have predictability. And then on top of it, you have SB2, which limits. So it's, it's a combination of a lot of things. And we're asking staff to jump through hoops right now. And to add one more thing on top of that in today's day and time, I just, I don't think that it's a wise time to make those decisions. Now, come fall and, you know, we have, we might have a better idea, but I bet you we don't have a better idea until October of 2022, when we have a year's worth of being under both SB2 and the new sales tax rule. Because then we're going to have a year that says what actually happened versus, and then you'll, you'll be able to see how that changed during the year because there may be some people that started giving us their sales tax. And at the end of the year, they didn't give us their sales tax. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts right now in revenue. And our citizens have pretty high expectations. If we close the library on the weekends or if you change the hours of the core, closed it in the middle of the day, you know, there's lots of things that are options that I don't think our citizens would really want us to do at this moment. And I've been using this opportunity to educate our citizens about how much of that tax dollar actually is the city? And how much of it, I can't get that far, is school district? And it is the school district portion that is the problematic part. And if you take, if you took the whole tax bill for each of these different groups or each of these different cities, you would see a dramatic difference in that. So I, I, I thought that last night when we had the conversation about homestead, we kind of took it off the table for, for this spring. And unless there's four people that want to put it back on, that doesn't stop anybody from continuing to do their research. But we won't talk about it again until, well, it'll be on your agenda, whatever you want it on your agenda.
Sorry.
So if we did the full 15 right now, the impact on average $103,25 for the year.
Full 15? So for clarification, 15, what?
If you added 15% to the.
Oh, to make it to 20%? Oh, yeah. It's just the multiplication, it's 15 times 25, right, right.
So.
Or 20 times 25.
I'm so sorry. So adding 15% is $325. Lot of money, but compared to an overall tax bill on that $429,000 house is probably $10,000, $12,000 if you add city, school district, everybody.
Yeah, it's a little over $10,000.
So sometimes I think there's this perception, if we could get 20%, it's going to greatly affect our tax bill. But it's $325. Just a tiny change in our tax rate does the same thing and goes across to both businesses and, and residences. So I tend to agree with the mayor. I mean, with everything we've got on our plate, to me, the homestead exemption seems like a big deal, but it's not that much.
But the $325 is out of 2,100 city portion.
Oh, absolutely. But it's still three, it's, we're not talking thousands of dollars. And I realize for a homeowner struggling to pay with the appraisals going up, 325 is significant.
Right.
But when you've got an $8 million hole or whatever it is, $10 million hole trying to fix, I don't think we're going to do 15% right away.
Right.
So if you do 2%, that's $50 a year. I just think we need to keep in mind the magnitude of what we're talking about here.
And to Gary's point, we have always focused on the, the overall tax rate rather than the homestead exemption, which is more equitable to both the business community and our residential side. And so that has been our philosophy. You know, when there was a reduction to be made, we did it at the, at the property tax level. So. But that's, those are, those are considerations that we have every year, multiple times.
Okay. Any other topics or thoughts? Nope. It's 10:24. It's 1024. And we can adjourn, correct? We are adjourned. Thank you all. This is great discussion. Appreciate it. Sets us up for the next several months. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you guys for letting me attend. I really appreciate it. Bye, guys.